Good evening, everybody. Let's all rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the start of tonight's meeting, the Board was in executive session regarding some personnel matters. We have a couple of special presentations today before we start with the regular meeting. Most importantly, I would ask that Dr. Feldstein make himself known there.
There he is.
Dr. Feldstein, the Board would like to issue the Special Proclamation. Whereas Dr. Joshua Feldstein has been a member of our community for 72 years since arriving at Delaware Valley College from Lithuania in 1939. And whereas Dr. Feldstein planned on attending the farm school for one year before heading off to the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, but remained here in Doylestown Township and earned his Bachelor of Science degree in horticulture. He joined the instructional staff at this school known as the National Agricultural College. He earned his Master's of Science degree in horticulture in 1956 and his PhD in horticulture in 1962 from Rutgers University. And whereas Dr. Feldstein during his years with Delaware Valley College held the following titles: instructor, assistant professor, associate professor, professor, chairman of the horticulture department, chairman of the plant science division, associate dean, then dean of the college, then in 1975 was elected the college president, which he held until June 30, 1987. Upon his retirement, he was named President Emeritus with a membership on the Board of Trustees. And whereas Dr. Feldstein had many accomplishments during his tenure with the college, including the admittance of the first woman to the college, addition of two academic majors in agribusiness and computer information systems management, reaffirming the college's accreditation, construction of the Student Center, construction of the James Work Memorial Stadium, improvements in the computer facilities in the Feldman Building, the building of the KFW and Helen H. Gemmell Center for Animal Husbandry, and the Sidney Markowitz Equine Facility, the addition of the laboratory and classroom space to the greenhouse complex, and renovations to the Allman Building. During his two terms as interim president, he oversaw the addition of the James Work Gymnasium, the addition to the James Work Hall, the Arthur Polly Greenhouse Complex, as well as construction for the Mandale Science Building. And whereas in 2007, Dr. Feldstein was recognized by the Bucks County Commissioners with the Distinguished Citizen Award and the Biotechnology Center named the pavilion in the new building in honor of Dr. Feldstein. And whereas Dr. Feldstein serves on the Bucks County Agricultural Land Preservation Board and the Bucks County Open Space Review Board, preserving over 10,000 acres of farmland. Whereas Dr. Feldstein also serves in the Doylestown Township Agriculture Security Area Advisory Council and chairs the Doylestown Township Open Space and Farmland Preservation Board, which has preserved 740 acres of open space within Doylestown Township. Whereas Dr. Feldstein is celebrating his 90th birthday this year, and that milestone is being recognized on Sunday, June 12, 2011. Therefore, be proclaimed that the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors recognizes June 12, 2011, as Joshua Feldstein Day. Adopted this day. All in favor of the proclamation?
May I take one minute, at least?
Yes, you may.
Number one, this pepper in his belly. She didn't tell me about it, of course, now you're here. Otherwise, I would have prepared at least an hour's speech. Well, I'm very, very honored by it. See, I've done all these things that you have mentioned, and I will continue to do so. Because my opinion is that every person has to do the best they can, and I've done that and I will continue to do it as long as this computer. Now, if you don't mind, I have to go back and take care of my bride of 66 and a half years is not too well tonight.
Our best regards to you, bride. Did I see Chief Coe? Sir, would you please proceed to the front and state your business?
Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for having time for us tonight. I'm Bill Coe, President of Doylestown Fire Company. I have two things I'd like to give out tonight. First, Madam Chair, may I have your help here for a second?
Me? And make sure you speak into the microphone.
I shall try to do that. Oh, right. We would like to present this watercolor print of our main fire station. The building was built in 1902. The Doylestown Fire Company has been operating in the Doylestown vicinity, including the borough of the township and around, since 1879, and we're pleased to tell you we have no problems today.
Oh, excellent.
So for your use of your building.
Isn't that lovely?
I point out that this is a few people here and everyone I'm talking about. The original watercolor was painted by Millie Pryor.
Don't let it get wet.
This past Wednesday night, we had our annual old-timers' night, and we traditionally recognize one to three organizations or individuals from the community that have provided a lot of support to us. This year, we recognized Chief Jim Donnelly from Doylestown Borough, the CBA Ambulance Association, and your own Chief Stephen White. Presented to Stephen J. White on the Doylestown Township Police Department, appreciation for your valuable contributions and support to the Doylestown Fire Company. Your speech has to be shorter than Josh's.
Well, I would say with 37 years in the Doylestown Township Police Department and 23 as chief, I am a rookie compared to Dr. Feldstein, the time that he has on there. But for the 23-plus years that I've been chief of police and the years before that as lieutenant and sergeant, one of the groups that I have cherished in my relationship with the community are the men and women of the fire companies, particularly Doylestown Fire Company. I don't believe generally our residents realize that these men and women volunteer thousands of hours of time every year. They are the ones that we should recognize, and I'd like to thank Bill Coe and all the men and women of the Doylestown Fire Company for their outstanding service to our community keeping it safe. Thank you.
Chief Coe, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'd love to have you.
I appreciate you offering, and I also chair your kind of stress-up. We have a therapy tonight.
Sure, go ahead. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any visitors or public comment tonight?
Ernie Gash from 15 Wilkshire Road. I'm really emotional today because the two people received awards that I've known for a long time, and I really feel it an honor just to be here to hear that. But also, that this community is unbelievable. This year is the fifth year I've been getting the officials for the senior gains, and they were switched to Hickon, and there were a number of things that had to be worked out. And it got, I mean, it really was a lot of time on my part looking around, but what came to place is that Jo Unger, who is like the head of the county, we've had a couple little disagreements here and there, but she understood there are a couple of things I would not do. I would not take people out, especially the older people, out like, say, to Hickon without medical attention, and she made sure that was taken care of. The school was locked, and make sure that there were toilets and all available. And then, with everything going on, she was a little short on her staff that she had, and she asked me to pass out a lot of things, which I wasn't ready to do. And the other thing is, they didn't have the dinner or luncheon, so she wanted me to give all the awards. And I just had a skeleton crew because a number of people, because of the economic times, had to work to make money rather than come and help me. And then I let the people know, and right near the end, and there were a couple of people from the community that are interested in sports, and some more people from the track chapter that I belong, and I just couldn't believe it. I was worried, 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 but I have a crazy philosophy. I can just do the best I can. And what happened is, when I got there, it worked unbelievably great. We started at 8:30, and we were done at 10:48, and I was able to let the ambulance go home, which we did need for one person. And the only thing that I know is that just to be able to do something in a community like this is just outstanding. Thanks.
Thank you for what you do, Ernie. Any other comments from the public or visitors?
Hi, my name's Penny Laracy. When the Pennsylvania General Assembly began screwing around with the sick veterans tax-exempt program, we lost our sick veteran tax-exempt status. Painful as it is, I now feel that I have the right to legally complain and ask to live in a neighborhood just like yours. Who of you that sits on this board lives next to a house that's been under construction since 1998? I do. Who of you on this board lives where there's a backhoe, a bobcat, construction equipment running for eight to 10 hours on the weekend? The weekend of May 21st, from 12:30 to 4:30, there was a constant running of heavy trucks, backhoes, bobcats, lawn mowers, weed whackers, blowers, you name it, it ran. Sunday, the 22nd, heavy trucks, backhoes, bobcats, tile saws, other equipments until 7:30 at night. Monday, May 23rd, lawn mowers, weed whackers, snowblow blowers. Monday, the 23rd, I called Sinclair. He is investigating, and I told him I was coming here tonight. One first question I have to ask you is, how long do you issue a building permit for? 15 years?
Typically, they're good for a year, and then they can be renewed.
15 years?
Yeah.
Okay. I would also appreciate not being told by a member of this board to go out, then I wouldn't know what was going on. With windows shut, air conditioners running, TVs running, we have no place to go to get away from the constant running of this heavy equipment. Even if we wanted to sit outside, we couldn't. I would like to know if any other township resident, or me, how we would have been treated if we had bobcats, backhoes, and other heavy construction equipment running for 15 years. I would like to know how many other township residents, me included, would have been treated if our construction jobs, I hope you gentlemen are listening to this, would have gone unfinished for 15 years. There's pictures of exposed wires that have not been addressed. Here's a situation that's been looked at for 15 years. Here's an unfinished safety condition that's gone on for 15 years. People come to our house during the recent neighborhood garage sale and have said, "I've been coming to your garage sales for years, and I don't ever see any progress on that place. Is it ever going to get done?" I always tell them to call their complaints to Doylestown Township Code Enforcement. They've allowed this to go on for 15 years. I would appreciate it if I could live in a nice neighborhood. Now that I'm paying taxes, my husband's still sick, we're paying taxes, I would like this mess cleaned up. 15 years is too long. You guys are putting up buildings? Don't worry, you've got 15 years. They don't do anything. I'm a little annoyed over this. Tom got the brunt of it the weekend I called him, and I said, you know, "We can't, we don't have any place to go." So if Sinclair needs some additional help through significant legislation to get this thing done, then give it to him, but he can't do anything. What am I supposed to do?
Well, we don't have an answer for you tonight, Mrs. Laracy, but I can assure you we'll look into it.
Yeah, like Sinclair since the 23rd. Thank you.
Well, there are rules we have to follow with zoning. Do you want to speak to that stuff?
Yeah, Sinclair did come to me today. He indicated that he had spoken to you. He has been out to the property, and so he is taking action, talking to them, and he will follow up with you as well. And I will tell him what you've shared with us tonight.
Okay. I know that we have a nuisance law in Doylestown Township, and I remember when it was adopted, and a lot of us said that if my neighbor paints his house purple, I have the right to come here and complain. In the simple words, that's what we thought 30, 40 years ago. Does any of this fall in under the nuisance law?
No. No. And we don't have a nuisance law at this time that reflects the color of homes and things like that. That's not under the nuisance. It's other things. But we will look into it. I just heard about it this afternoon, and now that you're here, I appreciate you coming out. You know, you can always call me, and if it was a very, you know, if it was very bad on that weekend, I wish you would have called the police department as well, because they would have gone out, and if it was disturbing the peace in any way.
All I was told is, well, the running of the equipment is within the timeframe. 15 years is a long timeframe to run equipment.
You're saying that they're running equipment for 15 years straight? Is that what you're saying right now?
Yeah, it's a construction site. Drive by, and you will see. Tom got the brunt of it. I called him. I was so beyond upset.
Saying a little upset, yes.
It's just gone on entirely too long, and it should be taken care of. I mean, I keep my property cleaned up, so does everybody else, and, you know, something has to be done about this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other visitor or public comment?
My name is Carol Mace, and I'm here to both thank you and encourage you forward. I live on Sugar Bottom. We have 5,000 cars a day that go by my house, and Chief White has been really instrumental, and Cynthia Philo also, in helping us to deal with the problem of too much traffic because the road is a cut-through. The last study we did, which was in May, or March, maybe?
In March.
That's, just so you get a feel for this, that's 275 cars on average each direction per hour, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's a neighborhood where we live, and we've gotten the McElhenney, Senator McElhenney, involved, and Heather's been really helpful with us trying to do something about this. The danger is that we're moving into summer months. So a couple weeks ago, I was taking my trash out, and a young man speeding around the corner in a pickup truck. Of course, I live down on the end by the hill, so they love to speed up the hill, and he's coming around a blind corner, and there I am in the road with my trash, and as he slams on the brakes and starts fishtailing, I'm thinking, "I can't even take my trash out." And then Saturday night, the kids have all graduated, so Saturday night, the racing started. Every summer, the kids race. Saturday night was motorcycle racing night, and from about 11 till 2, they raced their motorcycles up Sugar Bottom and past my house. Now, I don't have air conditioning, and even though I sleep with earplugs, you can't block out the noise of a motorcycle tearing up Pebble Hill, hitting that blind corner, and just ripping it past the school. And some nights, it's cars; some nights, it's motorcycles. But it's truly a hazard. We have, I have neighbors that have little kids that walk their kids and their dogs on our road. We don't have a shoulder. I have other neighbors, I've tried to explain to this woman, but she doesn't speak English, who pushes a baby cart on our road. There is no place to escape, and when people, when you try to, I mow my lawn with a cone out there, and all I get is yelled at by irate motorists. So I know that recently, you've approached Buckingham. I'm actually a Buckingham resident. I have never had much luck with them. I've been talking to them about this since 2006, but I would encourage you all to collaborate and try and turn this no-man's-land into the neighborhood it really is. And I want to make one more pitch for the people down on the other side of the school, because if we have that many cars at my end, they have probably, I don't know, Chief White, how many more than we do because of the subdivisions that go past them. And I have one neighbor down there that had to wait for 40 cars to go by to get out of her driveway. I have another neighbor down there, there's two little teeny roads that go over to Bridge Street so that people can skip the Sugar Bottom light. These are really unimproved roads. There are babies running around in these front yards, and these commuters race down those roads to miss the Sugar Bottom light. It's out of control. And so, you know, thank you for all you've done. I really want to recognize your support. We're almost there. Let's just push this a little harder.
What we did is, we were fortunate enough that it is a state roadway, and we were fortunate enough that PennDOT, surprisingly to me, made a 25 mile an hour speed zone on Sugar Bottom Road between Edison-Furlong Road and Foy Drive, which is basically the top of the hill. The problem is that they should, in my mind, they should have extended the 25 mile an hour speed zone at the very minimum to the end of our jurisdiction, which is St. Lawrence Way. The side that Carol lives on is Buckingham, where she was speaking about the cut-through streets is Warwick. The side of the roadway that's ours, I have recently, on the request of Carol and her neighbor Lisa, have asked Louis Belmonte of the PennDOT to consider extending the 25 mile an hour zone from Foy to Sugar Bottom, which is basically three tenths of a mile. So when the motorists, the only area that we, this is ridiculous that it is, the only motorists that we can enforce the speed limit on is the motorists coming up the hill. And the only time that we can enforce the speed limit is by the time they pass the second speed limit sign, which is the top of the hill. But as soon as they approach the top of the hill, there are two signs in front of them. One says 25 miles an hour, and within their sight says 40 miles an hour.
Speeds up. Everybody speeds up.
So I've asked him, he has not responded back to us. I'm hoping with Senator McElhenney's assistance that we do get a prompt response to it. But she is right. I mean, there are, I mean, the speed timing device was out there for four and a half days, and there were 18,700-plus vehicles passed through this section, segment of state roadway.
It's a two-lane, unimproved, no-shoulder road. It used to be dirt, and it just got paved. So it's really hazardous, and...
Well, we have to make it clear, it is a state road. We have no authority over it.
Yeah, we can only help them make the right decision.
I think you're going in the right direction in getting Senator McElhenney involved, and I'm, hopefully, will be able to report back to the Board what Mr. Belmonte's response is.
I do have a question. If you have a road that has jurisdiction from three different municipalities, would it be customary for one municipality to take the lead on jurisdiction on the road? Can you do that?
Jurisdiction meaning, we have the assistance of Buckingham Township Police and the Warwick Township Police, but we don't have the authority to issue a citation out of our jurisdiction.
But I guess my question is, for example, as a driver myself, and anyone else who has seen a police car, just be present. They don't have to be doing, I know they're not called speed traps, there's a more official...
Selective Enforcement Department.
Yes, one of those.
That's what I learned in 37 years and 23 as chief.
But if you're driving in an area where there's a propensity for people driving too fast, a lot of times, you'll see a police car sitting there watching the traffic to remind them that they need to go slower. And I don't know whether this is an opportunity for all three municipalities to take turns whenever possible to have a car there, because I know for me, if I saw a police car sitting there, even if I was doing the speed limit, I'd feel like I'd need to slow down.
Yeah. I think we have really two problems, and this is where I'm hoping Senator McElhenney will be able to help us. People speed, and they speed as they come up the hill because it's fun. We all have a little kid in us, and when we're driving, that's fun. We have way too many cars on that road. That is the biggest issue in my mind, is this road, and I think the only way you get cars off the road is you make it inconvenient for them to drive that way. So I'm a big advocate of three-way stop signs at Foy and at St. Lawrence. I wish we could repair the bridge for two years, because people would form a new habit. But that is the problem. They would hate it if someone drove through their neighborhood at the speed that they drove through mine. And they don't think of that road as my neighborhood. They think of it as their shortcut home or to work.
I think that if we asked, I mean, people often ask me, what's the, I'll go quickly. They often ask me, what's the biggest change? It's the number of vehicles in each household. When I first came here 37 years ago, there were one or two. Now there's four and five. That's the biggest change. And our roads were never built to take the volume of traffic. And I think that the general public does not know that Pennsylvania is the only state in the entire nation that does not permit their municipal police to use radar for speed enforcement, and that's absurd. You know, we went to the legislature, and we said that they gave us the legal right to use deadly force with a gun, but they won't let us use a radar gun.
With Belmonte, does it help to have the three municipalities write letters?
I'm sure that it would.
They'll do that. We'll follow through on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Announcements. Our next meeting is Tuesday, June 21st. The Doylestown Community Joint Bike and Hike Committee is gonna, will be holding a kids' bike derby on June 18 at the Activity Center, that building, the red building behind our parking lot, June 18, 10 to 12. And our program guide has details. The fishing derby is June 19, 2011, rain or shine, at Peace Valley Park. The check-in time is 7:30 a.m. You can register here, or you have to register here, with the admissions office by June 10. The Sounds of Summer Concert Series begins on Wednesday, June 29, at Chapman Park, with a performance of Omo's Fab. We have two changes in the schedule. Jimmy and the Parrots will be performing on July 13 at Central Park, 7 o'clock, not July 20 as printed. And In Full Swing will be performing on July 20 at Chapman Park, 7 p.m., not July 13. So there's a switch between Jimmy and In Full Swing. Okay? Just note that self. Okay. Doylestown Township Parks and Recreation Department has a new and improved website, DoylestownRec.com. DoylestownRec, all one word, dot com. Check it out. It's awesome. I'm not kidding. It really is. And I think that's it, except to acknowledge that the young lady in the back room, Dana Ekman, is celebrating a birthday today. Congratulations, Dana. Next item on the agenda, looking for a minutes to approve on May 3, 2011.
More for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five and O. Correspondent's Storm Drain on Pebble Valley Drive.
Yes, we received an email from a Mr. Melling regarding concerns for storm drainage, and have a very detailed memo from Dick regarding that, and Dick would like to address it in any detail if the Board has any questions. We would like to prepare a written response from the Chair to send to Mr. Melling. But Dick has outlined, I think, very well the purposes behind what's been done out there on the street.
Everyone had the opportunity to read the memo and the complaints? Okay. Do you all agree that we can send a response as outlined by Mr. John?
I would be in agreement.
Anything you want to add, Dick?
No, I just wanted some direction.
Oh, you got it. All right, we'll take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. There's another question. Okay. Um, there's another correspondence from, Mr. Paternostro, who's here. We've read it.
I can handle that if you want.
Please.
Yeah, Mr. Joe Paternostro actually brought up a great point. And anytime anybody's on a township roadway that's going to need traffic control for, you know, for paving or for entering the roadway or cutting trees or doing something, is required under PennDOT Publication 213 to have a certain set of signs and, and traffic cones and markings and alerting the public to that. Uh, we are going to now include in our permit to go onto the roadway that they submit their traffic control plan to Sinclair Salisbury and he'll make sure that it's part of the, that it meets the requirements. We're also going to make a proposal that Panonean Associates actually go out and inspect it so we know that it complies with the sign. The cost of doing that would be, would be put together with the permit in order to do the work on the roadway. And I think that I'd like to compliment Joe for bringing it to our attention and I think we'll have a good policy and procedure following that.
I have a question, Chief. Does that take care of the folks who bring out their large equipment to do grass cutting and they park the equipment on the, on a...
No.
On a one-way?
No, they are, they are parked vehicle on a roadway.
Yeah. That's really the dangerous concern. And they especially do it on Turk Road at the, at the blind hill so that you can't see what's coming on the other side.
That would be another issue that we could, we could address, another public safety issue, yes.
That's an enforcement issue.
That's an enforcement issue, exactly.
All right. I should, I should call you then when that happens.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paternostro. Okay, solicitor report.
Nothing we won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Township engineer.
Nothing at this time.
Police chief.
Well, as we know, the, the board got a letter today that Warwick Township Board of Supervisors voted last evening to withdraw from the regionalization study. Uh, I do believe that we, we could still go forward with the other two municipalities. It may be a little more, more difficult because there would not be the ability to split the housing of the regional police department. We might have to become creative and, and lease a, a modular office or something like that in order to do it, but it does put a crimp in it. I'd like to see the reaction of the other municipalities in the Central Bucks area to see whether anyone else would want to join us. Otherwise, we need to make a decision of what we are going to do as far as proceeding with the study.
Anybody have any comments? You've read the materials. We have the minutes from the last police regional committee meeting I submitted from May 11th. We have the review of, you had the opportunity to review, I assume, the Stroud Area Regional Police Department intergovernmental, intermunicipal agreement. Um, we've kept you up to speed on all the discussions. What do you think?
I, I think we've discussed this and the chief recommends it and I think we all agree it's the right way to go. There's, there's ways or details that are gonna pop up, of course, but I'm for continuing the study and continuing moving on. And I think the chief is suggesting to send out a new inquiry for anyone who wants to join the consortium.
Well, we'll certainly find out from the news coverage whether someone else will be available to it. We had scheduled a meeting. We had met the elected officials, the chiefs of police, PVA representatives had met a couple of weeks ago and we, we agreed that we would review the, the contract that was established by the Stroud Area Regional, the three municipalities that formed that regional police department to see if that is something that we could use. And in the meantime, Warwick voted to withdraw from the, from the, the study itself. So, it puts us into a little, a bit of a crimp. I think our next step would be, we have a meeting scheduled. We could meet in the next couple of weeks and then we could come back to the board with a discussion of, and see if there's anyone else interested, discussion whether we want to proceed with the, the issue of regionalizing.
So, after June, we meet on June 15th again. Still will report back then. Okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's disappointing because out of all the municipalities, Warwick was the one that was going to be saving the most amount of money. Um, and I really think that this is an opportunity with three police chiefs retiring. You know, that doesn't come along...
That's right.
You know, once in a hundred years. And for us to not take that opportunity and go forward with that, I think we, we would be remiss. So, I'd like to see us continue moving forward and seeing where this can go.
Is that the consensus of the board at this point? Okay. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda, Township Manager request for, on behalf of the Finance Director.
Yeah, I have two things. First, there's a request from our finance officer to attend the PICPA Local Government Conference in Hershey, July 18th and 19th. This, fees for the overnight stay and the cost of the conference are shared with the DTMA. So, we would appreciate, because there's an overnight stay, the authorization from the board for that overnight stay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second thing is, in the last newsletter, there was a survey on trash hauling. We appreciate that we've gotten a lot of responses so far. We hope that people will, um, if you haven't seen it yet, please pull it out, respond. Um, you can also just buy online as well. We have that information available.
Thank you. Supervisors, Barb, Eisenhardt?
Um, actually, I did have the Sugar Bottom Road thing on my list to talk about, but the one thing I would just like to add about that, um, I just was briefly chatting with the, the chief about possible traffic calming on that road. And he was saying, because it's a state road, that we wouldn't be able to do it.
No, it's not.
But could we make a request to PennDOT that we could look into traffic calming for there?
We, we could not look into it. We could make a request that they do a study to take some actions on their roadway that would, that would help the volume and the speed of the vehicles. But they, it's totally within their choice to do and to fund.
I'm just thinking, you know, it's, I think it's great that the three municipalities are talking about trying to work on it together. But if you look at the area like around CB West where they did traffic calming and they narrowed the roads and stuff, I think it significantly helped to reduce the speed there. And even though it's not our call to mandate they do it, it can't hurt to ask. So...
Actually, the CB West, the state did not do it. Doylestown Borough took over possession of all the roadways in the, in the borough. And since they then owned it, they were able to do that. When we asked for the upgrade to the Lower State and Memorial Drive and West Court Street intersection, the state came in and said, who put that in there? They have, that has to be immediately removed.
And I'm, I'm not saying that I think we should just put it in and then hope that they agree, that they like it. But I'm just using the CB West setup because I think that it works there. And it can't hurt to ask if they would be willing to look at it. Certainly, there's not a lot of funds for that stuff, but if you don't ask, it'll go somewhere else. So, I'd like to see the board be in favor of at least being an advocate to try to do that with PennDOT.
Basically, that's what we've asked Louis Belmonte to do, to come up with alternatives to affect the traffic. The simplest would be if they determined that there was a sight distance problem, that they would put in a multiway stop intersection would slow the traffic down.
Chief, when was, when was the request put into?
About a month ago. I sent a letter to Mr. Belmonte, yeah.
I think we, we'll just kick it off with the three municipalities.
Okay.
Anything else, Barb?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Tom Scarborough?
Yes, I'd just like to recognize someone who's given a lot to this community over the years. Doris Kleck is visiting evidently tonight.
Hi, Doris.
She was chairman, chairman of our EAC board for many years and she left us in this community and it's nice to see you come back and visit with us.
Come say hi.
I was hoping you were moving back, but...
No, sorry.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I'm now in the EAC in Everslock.
Well, that's nice. That's nice. Well, it's good to see you come back, Doris. Thank you.
Anything else, Tom?
Well, I just want to say, I attended a dedication ceremony at the old Doylestown High School, which burnt down many years ago. And I went there to school myself personally and they found the cornerstone for that, it's Central Bucks West in a, in a closet. And the principal had it hauled out and gave it over to the Doylestown Historical Society and had a dedication erecting that on the grounds at the old Doylestown High School. And I thought that was very interesting because there were a few of us in attendance who went there to school. And I had another, uh, great thing that happened to me. I was on the YMCA board at the time when it burnt down and of course, the YMCA started there. Uh, and for a dollar a year, we were able to lease that from the county commissioners. And when it burnt down, we said, oh my God, now what are we going to do? Well, you see what happened to the YMCA. Better things happen. I think if we were still there, or it didn't burn down, we'd probably still be there and have the old high school, which was not the most desirable place to have a YMCA. But, uh...
Tom, promoting.
Good things turned out well after all these years. And I just want to make that mention that, uh, they're going to erect this in tribute to the old, excuse me, Doylestown High School, which there might be some others in the audience here who attended that school. But, um, it was before Central Bucks was built, when we went to school there. And of course, now it's called Central Bucks West and South and East. And it's grown many, many times. But anyway, thank you.
Tom, do you know when that's gonna be, when the cornerstone's gonna be laid again?
Uh, it's being done right now. Yeah. They're, they're building a, a frame to put that in.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. And they had dedicated it that day.
Cynthia Phile?
Um, I just have one thing. Supervisor Eisenhardt and myself, we were able to attend the Home Run Derby this year, which was a lot of fun. Uh, we had kids from all over the place come and go to our park system. It was at Turk One and Turk Two. Families really had a great time. It was very, very hot, but great weather for kids to, to do this. And I don't know who won. Uh, I don't know if Karen Sweeney might know, but the kids get to go on then to try to do home runs for the next level. And then if they win that next level, they get to go down to Citizens Bank Park and actually hit down there, which is something I would love to do. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of us that would love to do that. So, it's really, it's a lot of fun and it's a great thing that we have our park system be able to offer that type of a program. Um, it's this community that hosts it. It's not another community. It's not Buckingham. It's Doylestown Township that does this. So, kudos to Karen. Uh, it was a lot of fun. Uh, and no, I did not hit a ball. I probably would have just cracked right in half if I tried to do it, but I, it was a lot of fun. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Rick?
I just have a comment and maybe a question for the chief or the rest. Um, we spent a lot of time in the park. We had a great dedication with Mr. Putman. And we all enjoy Kids Castle, going down the slides, most of us do, and the pavilions and walking through the parks. But I'm, I'm a little troubled with when I talk to people and all-included staff and residents about the vandalism that either continued going on or it's just starting. And then I find out that, you know, it's $10,000 of damage in Newtown and that new compost thing that I was excited about last year and Quakertown and all. So, I, I, is this something that's been going on? Is there some way to, we have a plan in place to eliminate it or reduce it?
Well, it's, it's an open field. I mean, there's no fence around the park and, and there are people that wander in and out of the park. We're constantly bringing people out of the park. It goes in waves. You know, I think that, you know, at times there are, there is vandalism and at times there, there's a lot of incidences and then it goes away for a little while. But that's really true of anywhere. There's no, it's not a restricted area. So, in the midnight hours and the evening hours, you can't really restrict the people coming in, although technically the park is closed.
Right.
Sure to putting a fence around the park, you can't keep people out of there.
Hidden cameras, security cameras, something like that?
I'm sure you could get that. Uh, I'd like to, it would be very expensive to, to be able to do that. We had, at one time, we had an alarm when Kids Castle, when it was first built, that was donated by ADT. And that kept, that was for several years, but we weren't able to sustain that. So...
Well, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. It's just something I ran into and I, I certainly would hate to read about it in the newspaper and I don't know what the cost is. But whatever the rest of the board thinks, I'd certainly like to know if there's some, some viable way we can do it economically.
Well, it's too big of an area. I mean, you have so many different buildings and so many different pavilions. And where would you put the camera? You couldn't have enough cameras to, to put it around.
Maybe surreptitiously move it around so that they don't know where it is, just by one or two cameras. And we won't tell anybody where it's going to be for the next two weeks. And I, I don't know the answer, chief. And as I said, I, I just would hate to see something that we've built and spent a lot of money and...
But most of it is nuisance vandalism. They'll kick out the screen or they'll leave debris in there. And that's the type of things that occur. Break bottles in there.
Well, one of the things that I know, and we were talking about this at the dedication of the environmental growth, educational growth, was, um, it's hard for the police to get through the park. The, you know, the cars can't drive in the park area there. You know, it's a smaller roadway. And possibly looking at bicycles for police. It was one of the concepts that came up. Talking about vandalism. And we had some vandalism a number of years ago at Kids Castle. So, you know, having...
On the tongue.
Police, yeah, police on bikes and, and, you know, possibly having some type of a security camera. You know, these are good things to think about and you have to do it with a whole program, because you want it to work, to deter. So, I, I agree with you, Rick, that, you know, it's something that we should look into.
Okay. You guys want to form a committee or something, look into it?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Anything else, Rick?
No, that's all.
All right. Two things. Um, East Road looks fabulous. Thank you very much for putting in those, um, those details that would make it, that make it safer to drive up East Road. I really appreciate that and our neighbors appreciate it. I got many, many comments on our last issue of the newsletter. Thank you very much, staff. This is an awesome publication. It's definitely another award winner. And yesterday we had our annual golf outing. It could be our fifteenth year doing it. Thank you, Barb. Uh, Rick, you were there, staff. We raised almost, we raised almost $20,000 in the golf outing yesterday, which is amazing. And, and there were some folks here in the audience that golfed, residents golfed. Um, so it was really quite a successful event. It was beautiful. Thank you. Um, unfinished business, pedestrian crossing upgrade grant bid.
Yes. We have a letter from Panone that bid was redone. As everyone knows, we only got one bid. We only got one bid the second time, but because we bid it twice, Community Development Block Grant Office accepts the, the bid from professional construction contractors in the amount of $46,156 and recommends the award of the bid.
Is there a motion? Move to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You? Pennsylvania State Fair. Um, we're not calling it anymore the Pennsylvania State Fair for references purposes. We're only going to call this the Doylestown Fall Fest Fair, should it ever come up on our agenda again. Pennsylvania State Fair is not going to happen in Doylestown Township ever. Okay? If it happens, it's going to be a Doylestown Fall Fest Fair produced by the same people, much smaller scale and very local. Whether it's going to happen this year or not, we don't know. But we are looking forward to getting Central Park up and going. Perhaps it can be, um, something that is produced at Central Park in 2012. And it would be the return of the Oktoberfest, but another company producing it. We would still get money and we would still reap the benefits of 20% over that top. So, um, I'm not sure if it's going to happen this year. If it happens this year, it's going to happen at 611 and Edison-Furlong Road. It would be much more scaled down. It'll be a smaller event, presumably less traffic and perhaps remote parking. So, we'll see what happens. We're going to meet with them one more time for 2011 and... Arms House. Arms, did I say, what did I say?
Edison-Furlong and 611.
611, Edison-Furlong.
Just made a whole bunch of people.
I just, I just moved it to the 7-Eleven.
Woo!
Arms House and 611. I, thank you very much for correcting me.
Arms House.
Arms House and 611.
What a difference.
Turk Fields. So, um, just so you know, and that, if it's scaled down, it would probably not include the area contemplated by the Dog Park. So, we'll see. But stand by. No decision has been made. No recommendation is being made. Thank you very much on that.
Barbara, if people have questions about this, is there, should we have them submitted to Stephanie for answers?
Well, they, they're, we don't have any answers yet, but they can certainly email the township or email me directly and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Because I know that there were, we did receive a lot of concerns about the production as it was put forth.
We, we received, um, a, a number of concerns from Warrington Township residents, a number of yays from our area. And the park board for Doylestown Township has recommended we do it. So, you know, there's pluses and minuses all around. And it's $50,000 to the township if we do it.
And it's $50,000 plus part of the gate, percentage of the gate.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, over that. Okay. So, stand by. Um, public hearing on the conditional use B-15 within Neiman trap.
I think that...
We're gonna, we're gonna change, change order here?
Mr. Carr, on behalf of the Pond Run Development, it has to be moved ahead of Mr. Murphy.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy has consented. By way of background, you'll recall the board approved a, a land development proposal from the Pond Run Community, which constructed a new building. In order to be, I guess, more competitive in the marketplace, the applicant's requesting that that final land development plan be amended so as to be able to construct 27 sunroom additions, each one's 20, 200 square feet. The plan before you was prepared by Cowan Associates, was dated 12/30/03, last revised March 8, 2011. I would note that your planning commission has recommended approval. And when we get to that point, I have some conditions that would be appropriate. Mr. Carr, do you want to provide a brief explanation to the board as to what's envisioned here?
Uh, it's precisely as Mr. Garten has described. Uh, we have 300 residential units there. We're talking about adding sunrooms to 27 of them. Uh, they'll create a little bit of a cathedral ceiling space and, and I think really nicely enhance the exterior of these buildings. We've been to the zoning hearing board to obtain some relief from setback requirements for about 13 of the units. They... for about 13 of the units. They didn't have a problem with that. The planning commission recommended it. We have review letters dated March 23, 2011 from Boucher &amp; James, March 23, 2011, from Pickering Courts, and EAC review letter dated April 21st. There is also a Bucks County Planning Commission review letter, the date of which I do not recall, but-
April 15, 2011.
April 15th. Essentially, all of the comments in these review letters, our responses will comply. There's a number of drafting items that need to be addressed to Mario's satisfaction and we're confident that we can do that. And so we would, I've had an opportunity to look at the conditions that Mr. Garten would ask you to impose on this approval and we're prepared to agree to those.
Do you have a picture of what's proposed, what it'll look like when it's done, just so the board and the public can see?
This is what they look like currently. And we're talking about building space, which you can see in the interior of the units would create a nice little city or dining area. Great, and you know the property and-
There are long-term plans to upgrade the, a site considerably differently and, you know, more dramatically and they'll be before you when our-
When we move there, we can-
When our grand planning is all done, correct? Yeah. But for the time being, we're trying to stay afloat in this market and there's a lot of competition out there, so.
Is there a motion to approve?
Any details, conditions, any questions from the board?
Based on those conditions?
Can I identify the conditions?
Okay, can I? Never mind.
Appropriate conditions would be compliance with Boucher &amp; James report dated March 23, 2011, compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson report dated March 23, 2011, compliance with the Doylestown Township Director of Code Enforcement's correspondence dated March 24, 2011, compliance with the Panoni report dated March 22, 2011, compliance with the issues noted in the Bucks County Planning Commission report dated April 15, 2011, next, compliance with the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board decision dated June 2, 2011, an extra seat of all permits approved by the agencies having jurisdiction, including but not limited to the Bucks County Conservation District, funding and execution of developed financial security agreements and making sure all the township expenses are paid. The impervious surface ratio shall not exceed the existing non-conformity. And lastly, compliance with the EAC report dated 4/21/11 related to stenciling. Mr. Carr, are those conditions acceptable?
They are. And just in case the board's interested, we're removing some roadways for an overall net reduction in impervious surface.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve this with the conditions set forth by Mr. Garten?
Second. Questions, concerns, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Give me a second to introduce the next matter, if I may. Won't take me too long.
First is the B-15.
Yes.
Where would you like us to put the easel, sir?
Well, where it can be seen by the board and by the viewing public would be, and also to the extent-
Don't move that. That's not-
The extent possible, that obviously the audience would like to see it as well.
Do your best. The sandwich board probably works best.
Maybe you can hold it. There you go.
Slow rotation. Savannah White.
Tonight is intended to be a public hearing on a conditional use application submitted by the applicant related to property we know as the Nieman Tract, which is tax parcels 9-7-30 and 9-7-30-4.
130.
That's not what the review letter said, but, in any event, whatever the parcels are on the tax maps. To that extent, I will incorporate the township's file noted in the records into the record. Notice that this hearing appeared in the intelligencer on May 17, 2011, and again on Tuesday, May 24, 2011. The plan, which was the subject of the conditional use application, was prepared by Gilmore and Associates, Inc., was dated September 1, 29, and was last revised March 30, 2011. The application submitted by the applicant seeks the grant of two conditional uses. The first is a request for conditional use approval to utilize the B-15 use, which permits single-family attached dwellings in conjunction with use of an historic structure. And the other conditional use relates to Article 7, Section 175-103.4.2.2 parentheses C. So the applicant may be permitted to install a utility crossing in the Riparian Carter for the Stormwater Basin Outfall Pipe. When and if we get to the point of the board to consider the application for the two conditional uses, I do have some conditions. Mr. Murphy, would you like to make a record, please?
Thank you, yes. Good evening. I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight is Greg Glitzer from the Gilmore office, who, as Mr. Garten indicated, has prepared the plans, which are the subject of the conditional use. As Jeff indicated, there are two aspects of the conditional use. We'll talk about each of them separately. But our hope and expectation tonight is this will be the end of what has been nearly now a two-year period of time when we first introduced the project to the board in the fall of 2009, when we first suggested a redevelopment of, as Jeff said, the Nieman Tract or the White Eagle Labs property on Lower State Road. Believe it or not, a year ago, next week, the board adopted the resolution adding the Nieman Homestead to the list of historic places in the township, which gave us the opportunity to pursue the first of the two conditional uses. So we've been through a long series of multiple sketch plans and then after last June 15th, when the board adopted the resolution, we've proceeded forward with the development of the sub, or the land development plans and the conditional use application. And we've been to your planning commission and had a favorable recommendation and we're here this evening to first do the conditional use. And assuming the board supports it, we would then move into the land development phase and hopefully have that approval so that we can finally start to make some physical improvements to the property by demolishing what's out there, which I know is an issue for a lot of the budding neighbors who would like to see some action taken to try to eliminate some of the stigma that's been out there for some time. So I guess with that as background, we should probably have Mr. Glitzer sworn. Mr. Glitzer, you've been in front of the board numerous times. You've previously been qualified. You are the project engineer for the project, correct?
I am.
All right.
I think the board will recognize Mr. Glitzer, who's a licensed professional engineer, as an expert and perhaps our course photographer can swear Mr. Glitzer for the purpose of making the record. I think I would be remiss, Mr. Murphy, if I didn't ask if anyone in the public wanted to be a party to these proceedings. That means, do you wanna be a participant to the extent that you ask questions, you make comment, you have a right to participate in any appeal and the like? Does anyone wish to be a, pardon?
I did.
We did, we did.
Can we have your names, please?
Donna Strauss.
Donna Strauss, S-G-R-A-U-S.
Fifty Radcliffe Drive.
Fifty Radcliffe. And you, ma'am?
Marcel Jones, and I'm 54 Radcliffe Drive.
M-A-R-
C-E-L-L-E.
Marcel, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you'll be given opportunity to ask questions, if you like.
Another person?
In the back, yes.
Jack Leroux, 1975 Lower State Road.
Okay.
Jack Leroux.
Oh, Jack Leroux.
1975 Lower State Road.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir?
William Lee, 42 Radcliffe Drive, Florida.
Spell your last name, please.
Lee E.
Thank you.
Radcliffe Drive, for my benefit, is directly behind the lake.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Mr. Glitzer, if we can try to maybe move this on, rather than doing a more formal question and answer, you are the individual that prepared the land development plans and the conditional use application, correct?
Correct.
You've heard Mr. Garten provide the introduction about the property, where it is, what it is. You've heard Mr. Garten mention that there's two separate tax parcels, correct?
Correct.
Property is owned by DBD Realty LTD, Inc., correct?
Yes.
And we have a deed that we'll introduce as, Mr. Garten, you wanna mark it as A1?
Have the reporter mark it, if you would.
Okay.
I need to interrupt. One second, sorry. I need to make sure that you're being heard because this is being televised, sorry. Do you, do you need a microphone?
Can you have your mic on?
Should you turn it on?
Sorry, we're not hearing you. Thank you. It is, okay. We'll check, we'll check.
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. Proceed.
Oh, that's good. We'll have the reporter mark as exhibit A1, which is a deed dated October 27, 2010, between the executors of the estate of Janet M. Nieman and DBD Realty LTD LLC.
That'll be received.
Mr. Glitzer, the property is located at 2015 Lower State Road in Doylestown Township, correct?
Correct.
And its property is currently zoned R1 residential, correct?
It is.
And it is how large?
It's a total of 27.76 acres to the title line and it nets out at 27.225 acres.
Two tax parcels involve 9-7-130 and 9-7-130-4, correct?
Correct. It is 130.
And we'll mark or have the stenographer mark as the next exhibit appears to be an aerial photograph of the site, correct?
Correct.
Would you like to put the full-size version of that?
That'll be noted as exhibit A2.
Correct.
Do you folks that are parties wanna see these exhibits? Okay.
Describe for the benefit of the board and the audience what exhibit A2 represents.
A2 is a Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission aerial photo exposed in 2005. Excuse me, one sec. That shows the extent of the property of the site. To the left of the, of the view to the south is the Shammany Creek. And moving across the site, generally parallel with Lower State Road, we see on tax parcel 130, 9-7-130, the buildings that constitute the White Eagle Labs site.
Why don't you highlight one, if you would point, for those that may not be familiar?
I'm pointing to the center of the site.
Okay.
The area with the white roofs, as you look at it?
White roofs and gray roofs out closer to Lower State Road.
And since we have parties in the audience, why don't you highlight for the board where Radcliffe Drive is in relation to our property?
The lower right of the, of the plan, it says circular loop road around the-
And the brown area that's unusually configured is what we've referred to as the lake?
Yeah, I think we'd call it the pond. It's about a one and a half acre surface area pond.
Beyond the White Eagle Labs, would you identify any other existing improvements on the site?
Or just north of the, of the pond is the, calling the Nieman Homestead that includes a house.
Would you point that out, please?
Existing house is right here. There is a cottage just to the southwest of the house and there are several garages and sheds in that area. Also an existing swimming pool between the house and Lower State Road. And that's in this area here.
While we're on this aerial, would you highlight the area of the ongoing construction of the Parkway? How it relates, and identify how it relates to the site? I know we're gonna come back to that, but-
Right.
Highlight now, if you would.
You'll see a, you actually see a triangular parcel to the northeast corner of the site. That was a right-of-way that was acquired by PennDOT when it was an expressway. Inside that triangular parcel is a row of pine trees and those are generally staying. The current Parkway construction is further to the north towards Wells Road from that point. Off, that's largely used as a staging area and some utility connections. But the, but the Parkway now being an accurate structure, that, that area won't, won't be as impacted as it previously was.
You indicated the site's almost 28 acres. Could you outline for the board the full exterior limit of the property beyond where the cluster of White Eagle Labs buildings are?
Yeah, the entire, the entire property excluding that, that right-of-way, which was previously acquired. I'm just going to trace it out right now. I'm running roughly parallel with Radcliffe Drive. Now I'm turning and running towards Lower State Road, making another turn across an open floodplain meadow, crossing the far side in the Shammany Creek, and run roughly perpendicular with, or to Lower State Road. And then we are going to run parallel with Lower State Road and there's two parcels there that were subdivided. You'll recall it's part of the Nieman estate. Mr. Leroux's parcel is one of those. And then we pick up back to the title line of Lower State Road.
I'm gonna mark as, or have the stenographer mark as exhibit A3, a panel of, looks like 12 photographs. And, well, there's a series of three panels of multiple photographs that perhaps collectively we can mark as exhibit A3. And if you would, Greg, just talk quickly about each of those three panels that were marked collectively as exhibit A3.
The first, first two represent various ground views of the White Eagle Lab buildings on the site. And they just give a representation of the, of the condition of the, of the existing buildings on the site and pavements on the site. Let's see, the generally poor condition, I think everyone's very familiar with. The second is also a view. Now, moving out towards Lower State Road, you see some of the better, better quality, better condition, but still very large existing buildings on Lower State Road. So those represent everything that's on, all structures that are on parcel 9-7-130. And that's about an 18, oh, over 18 acre site.
The third panel?
Third panel are ground views of various structures, not the main house, but the various support structures on parcel 130-4. We're calling the Nieman Homestead parcel. There are the sheds, garages and cottages that are on the site, on that parcel. Those are actually, all those structures are slated for removals for renovation.
There's a single panel of six photographs of the existing Nieman Homestead. We'll mark as exhibit A4. Describe for the benefit of the board and the audience what those represent.
There are various views of the existing Nieman farmhouse. As we recall, a powerful presentation, and I guess it was, where they had a, where we had a presentation on the history of the Nieman house and all the background of it to add to historical resources.
Make sure your mic is picking up. I know that you are. Thanks.
I'm just gonna hold it.
Yeah, it makes sense.
We'll mark as exhibit A5, a document that is entitled "A Record Plan for Doylestown Executive Quarters and Silver Maple Farm Prepared by Your Office," correct?
I would note, we'll receive all these exhibits that you've already marked to date.
Yes, A5 is the, is the land development plan for the project, the record land development plan.
Describe for the benefit of the board what that plan represents.
It represents a mixed-use concept for the site where, starting with the former, former White Eagle Lab parcel, existing structures and pavements on that parcel are being removed and replaced with three, what we're calling village-scale office buildings, a total of 32,000 square feet in area. They're surrounded with a park, a ring of parking and access that is a total of 174 parking spaces. Buildings are separated with courtyards and hardscaping in between them, walkways, gathering areas. To the, to the east of the, of the office portion, shows the residential component of the property. It's 10 new townhouse units or single-family attached units anchored by-
Adaptive reuse.
Reuse of the Nieman farmhouse parcel in this area here.
Are any of the existing structures that you've previously described in exhibit A3, the White Eagle Labs buildings, are they, any of those gonna remain?
No.
But the Nieman farmhouse is intended to remain, correct?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Would you identify where on the plan the Neiman farmhouse is located?
Once again, it is in this area here.
Okay. Would you identify on this plan, Exhibit A5, where the proposed points of access to Lower State Road are located?
The residential community takes access to the Lower State Road, really in the same location there that there's an existing driveway right now. We're using that as sort of an existing disturbance envelope in accordance with the low-impact strategy that we've come up with for development of this plan. So that is actually in an existing driveway that's being widened out and repaved. The driveway to the office portion is about 70 feet to the east of where the existing site drive is right now. And these are optimized really to promote their road widening, road improvement program to balance widening and tapers to allow left-turn lanes into the site. Basically, it works with the improvements that are being done by PennDOT as part of the Parkway.
And we've already had meetings, not only with the Township Traffic Consultant, but also with PennDOT to review the locations of those entrances that you've just described, right?
Yes, we have.
Okay. You mentioned previously that there had been a study commissioned by the applicant on the history of the Neiman Homestead, correct?
Yes.
We'll mark as Exhibit A6, the architectural and historical analysis for the estate that was prepared by Jeff Marshall, the Heritage Conservancy.
It'll be received, and I think it's the same as you submitted to board about a year ago, is it not?
Correct. But just because this focuses on the aspect of the conditional use that gives rise to the application, we would introduce it as Exhibit A6. That study, and A7 would be the June 18 correspondence from Ms. Mason forwarding to me a copy of the resolution of June 15, 2010, whereby the township added the Neiman Homestead onto the list of historic places.
They'll both be received.
Thank you. A6 and A7. While we're on the house, would you, we'll mark as Exhibit A8, another panel of two architectural renderings of, I believe, the Neiman estate home? Would you describe for the board and the audience what those represent?
I guess I characterized this earlier as an adaptive reuse. It really isn't a reuse, it's still a residential structure, it's a renovation. That takes a look at the, some of the salient features that Mr. Marshall identified in the report, including the main entrance to the house and some of the doors. It tries to accent them, and the design provides for removing some of the more contemporary features. One of the previous exhibits shows about a two-thirds width wraparound porch that will be removed and replaced with a much simpler but more focused entrance. That theme will be repeated around the back of the house, along the short side of the house. So this is basically the renovation plan for the farmhouse. And again, it's sort of loosely, that's the theme for the rest of the architecture.
What's the exhibit, Mr. Murphy? Exhibit A10, is it?
What Mr. Glitzer just referred to is Exhibit A8, I believe.
A8?
Mm-hmm.
Now, Mr. Glitzer, that is how you envision the Neiman farmhouse to look when you finish this project, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Can I see the original?
Just to see it, I think the board would like to see.
I want to see the comparison between the original and your renovated version.
Let me put that down here.
Sure.
This represents that contemporary port, which kind of hides the main entrance, some of the other features that are kind of add-ons and bolt-ons. See, in that back view, which is on the right view of this rendering, that porch really kind of dominates that whole back view, which would be seen from the.
Is that?
Yes.
The replacement for that?
And while we're on that, why don't you, you're not going to do that, are you?
Wow.
While you're on that, why don't we describe, using the record plan as, show the board where the walking trail is proposed to go, and show what portion of the facade of the home is seen from the walking trail?
Well, just as a general reference, the old homes were generally oriented alongside to the south for favorable southern, solar exposure. So as the road system developed, that part of the house got alienated really from public view. So it was very much the Planning Commission's idea to try to, you know, get some public exposure there. So I'm going to just sort of trace out the walking path as it traverses the site. We're all proposing a construction down into Neiman Park that will run, and basically will be almost 3,000 linear feet of path. But the path will traverse up a hill, up a slope, and then run along the top of our bio-retention facility where it is a little flatter, and then provide a view of essentially this part of the house, the former front, the historic front of the house. And then we'll traverse up into the right-of-way for the Parkway. You'll see a deflection up in the far northeast corner, and that's to miss a stormwater management facility that PennDOT's building in that area.
When you mentioned previously of the original Neiman subdivision, that was not the route that bike-and-hike and park-and-reck contemplated for the future extension of the trail, correct?
So, the question.
The original proposed location for the trail was not as you just described?
Right. The board may have seen on our early sketch plans a much more simplified trail routing where we ran it and got it to Lower State Road as quick as possible, and ran parallel with the right-of-way and connected up in this area.
But that's also not where an existing easement exists, which is now going to be extinguished either, correct?
Existing easement that was laid down as part of the estate subdivision traversed the westerly part of the site and across Mr. LaRue's property as well, basically connected the Lower State Road, but didn't provide a direct connection to the Parkway's shared-use trail.
So as part of this application, that existing recorded easement is going to be extinguished on our property?
Correct.
And then it's going to be relocated on our property for the upwards of 3,000 linear feet to a point where it can connect, well, that 3,000 includes the off-site portions as well.
Right.
In the township-owned property.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions about the house?
No.
Do you have architecturals related to the office buildings and the other new dwellings you're going to construct?
Are you going to give me a chance?
You're not moving for it. I asked this one in a hurry in law.
It's the next exhibit. Exhibit A9.
The conditional use is this part of it here.
Mr. Glitzer.
Very familiar.
Answer Mr. Garten now, since he's in such a hurry.
Yeah, it's a very familiar plan.
That's not Exhibit A9.
It's close.
You want to do them both together?
That is A, that's A9, the 11 by 17 version.
What did you just hand out?
That's not the same as the one.
Oh, that's A9.
This is A9.
It's the other A9, I guess.
We'll put the real A9 up.
All right.
A9, this, why don't you show it to me?
All right, does that look better?
Yeah. What's A9?
A9 is a proposed elevation of one of the three unit townhouses or attached dwellings, showing typical finishes, typical roof lines, and elevations, and color palette basically for the townhouses.
Will all the models or all the dwellings be similar to that?
Similar, yeah, it'll be a permutation of those themes, no two completely identical.
Explain, as we did to the zoning hearing board, why these buildings have a more residential scale and characterism as opposed to a more traditional office building?
Well, this is the residential.
This is the residential.
I know, I thought we were going to go beyond that. Now we're going to move to A10.
He's in a hurry.
B10.
Right.
I just have a quick question. The one texture, is that, I can't see, is that a siding or is that a stucco or is it just brown because that's the color you put on?
Stone?
Is it stone?
No, up, go up.
It's stucco.
It's stucco?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that lichen stick? Or is it real stone?
I don't know what that'll be, I really don't. I know what you mean.
Yeah, I know. Okay, just asking.
Don't know.
A10.
A10 is a more familiar exhibit that was part of the PowerPoint presentations. The reduced version that we handed out has the old layout of the townhouses in the plan view. Actually, in this view, it's been cut out because that is changed a little bit. These are the office buildings, as you would see from Lower State Road, and again, village-scale or residential scale, we're trying to convey that is not a, you know, a contemporary glass-faced office. So it transitions to the residential use on the farmhouse site visually and physically.
And for the board's benefit, we had to go to the zoning hearing board a month ago to get a very small amount of relief from the net site density.
Correct.
Regulations of the zoning ordinance to permit three separate buildings to be constructed as opposed to a single building, which would have met your ordinance, but because everyone preferred a more residential scale and feel to the office buildings, we separated them into three separate buildings, and that caused the need for relief, which the zoning hearing board favorably granted.
Correct. The handout, the exhibit I'm putting up is two of the graphics that are in the report for A11. A11 is a separate item of conditional use for the Riparian Corridor encroachment into Zone 2. There's two 11 by 17 foldouts in the report, and we've blown them up here. The first is the existing conditions of the Riparian Corridor of the Shammany Creek. We have it red is Zone 1, and actually Zone 2 is in blue, and Zone 2 actually represents the limit of the floodplain of the Shammany Creek. We are requesting a conditional use for the outfall of this bio-retention basin. After some reviews and discussions with Mr. Canali's office, it was decided that we put in an outlet pipe as a sort of secondary means of stormwater conveyance. It's our intending for that basin to be fully infiltration capable, but knowing some of the vagaries and maybe soil conditions that are underneath the buildings right now that we couldn't test, it is a sort of a belt and suspenders type approach. Basically, we're disturbing 150 square feet of Zone 2 of Riparian Corridor for an outfall pipe, and that's.
That's the extent of your encroachment, is it 150 square feet?
Yes, it is. Correct. So the bottom exhibit, which is the second plan in your packet, shows the, in sort of narrative form and in bullet item form, what the mitigation and restoration techniques that we are proposing, that our obligations are under the zoning ordinance, basically. The bio-retention area itself increases the width of the Riparian zone in that area. Ms. Goldstein has suggested in her review that we substitute some shrubs for some seed mix and comply with that request, and detailed that out to her satisfaction.
Right, and I know Mr. Garten and I have spoken about the Exhibit A11, which is the Riparian Corridor Management Report that Greg submitted. Your township planner reviewed it pursuant to her May 31 review. We've indicated that all her comments would be wolf-apply items in that review, correct?
Correct.
Exhibit A12, the next to the last exhibit, would you please describe?
That's the last, that's the last one I have.
I have one you don't know about.
No.
And we've touched about, on this topic previously, but just to complete the record, explain for the board and the audience what Exhibit A12 is.
The concept plan for road widening, prepared by Traffic Planning and Design, Projects Traffic Consultant. And this plan was subject to informal review with PennDOT and with Phil Werstha. The plan has been endorsed. The plan is built into our land development plans, assuming we would be successful in moving forward with approval of those plans, it would form the basis of our highway occupancy permit application. Basically, what we're doing, we're taking the widening that PennDOT is proposing as part of the at-grade intersection with the Parkway, and extending that down through the project frontage and putting shoulders in. We are providing for a left-turn lane into both the residential driveway and into the office driveway. And once we provide those lanes, we have to then taper out the transition traffic back out fairly conventional, but an extension basically of the approach that's been done with the Parkway.
The final exhibit, which we'll mark as Exhibit A13, is an item that had been recommended by the township and township solicitor specifically, and that is a real estate tax impact analysis for this particular project. And I'll certainly provide it, and just, I'll give you a quick summary, that making certain modest assumptions about the cost of construction of the 32,000 square feet of office, the value of the restored Neiman farmhouse, and the value of the 10 proposed attached single-family units, and using current tax rates, the total taxes generated, and this is real estate tax, not earned income tax or anything else, but simply real estate tax total would be $207,275. As you might expect, the lion's share of that would go to the school district upwards of $163,000. County would enjoy about $30,000, and the township somewhere north of $14,000 out of that total. But I had a chance to previously share this yesterday with your solicitor, just to have him review the assumptions made in it, so that would be the projected current tax benefit, if you will. I know you probably are unhappy, Ms. Chairperson, looking at your look, but $14,000.
I have that face, do I?
Yes. So those would, I would move Exhibits A1 through A13.
They'll be received.
And just to summarize, I think the various exhibits that we've talked about, I think, clearly show that we've satisfied the conditional use requirements for the B15 use. The issue of the encroachment of 150 square feet into the Riparian Corridor for the outfall pipe from the bio-retention basin, I think, is the minimus, but, and I think, I'll defer to Mario, but I believe the installation of that outfall was something that you and Mario have discussed and felt it would be appropriate given the site conditions.
Our staff, yes.
Right, okay. So that would be our conditional use presentation.
Mr. Murphy, I know you didn't mention it, but I know there's some people who are concerned about the pond, they don't realize, we'll talk about it in land development, but just to make sure that you're on the record at this point, what's the plans with respect to the pond and the future maintenance of the pond?
And maybe a broader question first, Greg, if you would. Let's talk about the proposed amount of open space of which the pond is a part, and what would be the proposal for it?
Well, the plans are set up to enclose the pond within that open space parcel, about 14 and a half acres, that will be offered for dedication to the township. And the limits of that easement or that parcel run along the southerly boundary of the stream protection easement that was established during the estate subdivision. Obviously, the maintenance of that is, you know, is open to discussion, and I think even the ultimate acceptance of dedication of that or convenience of that is open to discussion. But for purposes of moving the plan forward, we did see sort of a logical break between the Homeowners Association and Condominium Association and the township parcel.
I thought I remember hearing that the Homeowners Association was going to assume the responsibility of maintaining the pond, am I incorrect?
That is correct, subject to Board of Supervisors' approval, even though we would offer the area in dedication, I think we'd be more comfortable, and I think maybe the neighbors would be more comfortable, that a more active management and maintenance of the pond would be a better thing as opposed to the township being responsible for it. Additionally, the neighbors at prior meetings have talked about the need for repair of a fence that presently separates the rear of their properties from the pond. We've indicated a willingness to make those repairs.
They're done?
Yes, they came and took down two trees very quickly for my sister-in-law.
Right.
They've been taken down, but the debris has not been removed, it's still sitting there, but they were active very quickly.
Wait, 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 one second, that was Donna Strauss. And next time we comment, you have to get to a microphone.
Okay.
Sure. And you can have. And you can have the one in my pocket, because I don't know.
Mr. Murphy, nothing else to present?
Nothing further present, terms of testimony.
Are there any other board, are there any board questions?
No.
No. Are there any questions from the persons that wanted to have party status on the conditional use component? We're going to go from this to the land development piece, but are there any questions from any of the persons that had status as participants in the conditional use proceedings?
Maybe you can...
You come up and ask questions of the applicant.
Is that about anything on here?
Absolutely.
Okay.
There's a microphone over here you can use to...
Use a mic. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Donna Strauss, and I just want to ask a question about the retention place that's right above the pond, if you can...
Can you help her?
Put it back so she can...
So that retention basin is right above where the pond is. See, I look back in this direction from where I sit in my dining room. I look at that pond, and I look at the wildlife there. What I'm worried about is I'm going to be looking at the pond and then another big hole out my window. So I'm just wondering how big that retention basin is in comparison to the pond space.
Well, the surface area of the bio-retention basin is visually about a quarter the size of the pond, so it's...
Let's go back and tell everybody what a bio-retention basin is.
Yeah, bio-retention is a little more than a hole in the ground that you've seen in a sort of conventional basins.
Right.
It's a heavily landscaped basin that has an amended soil mix in it. It's supposed to soak in old water and work with the planting. So it's a very heavily landscaped, first of all, so you won't see, so you won't see a visible hole.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have the volume that a surface, that a old conventional bomb crater basin does.
Right, when you go in a neighborhood and you see this huge hole...
You'll hear these referred to as rain gardens. Now, we didn't label this one a rain garden, because it's a little bigger than what we call a rain garden in the residential part, where we have four separate rain gardens, smaller, much more heavily landscaped, much more interacting with the residences here. So, but it is a landscaped feature, and as part of the Riparian Corridor conditional use that we were asking for, that does require some additional Riparian plantings, both trees and, in this, in our case, understory shrubs to sort of blend that in. Now, that's also north of the existing stream channel that's on the other side of the pond, so it is quite a ways removed. You know, obviously, you have the pond, the stream channel drops down, and the slope starts to climb up, and then there is a flat on the inside. So will it be visible? It may be visible in the winter. I would suspect that as this project grows in, though, in the summertime, it's not going to be visible from there.
Right.
Will there be water that Ms. Strauss could see in it? It's not going to retain water, correct?
No.
It's not going to be like, it's not going to be another big hole with water in it, that's all. I just didn't want to look at something like that.
And that outlet gives us, that we talked about in the conditional use, gives us the ability to kind of fine-tune its performance. The idea is that it, the water will be sitting in the soil mix. It's a very loose, organic soil mix, and, you know, works to nourish the plants that are there.
Thank you.
You had mentioned something.
You had any questions on anything, Mrs. Strauss, before you sit down?
Anything, any other questions on this?
On this issue, no. That was, on the other issue of the, I have a question about the cleaning of the pond, but you just kind of settled that when you said it was the, you're going to turn that over to the Homeowners Association, correct?
And we're assigning the maintenance to the HOA.
Right, because are we allowed to show you pictures of that pond now? Or is that in the next section? Because I thought there was two sections.
Well, I think the next section, we'll deal with that when we come to the land development issue.
Cynthia, do you have something?
Yeah, just a quick question. You had mentioned that she wouldn't be able to see the retention basin there in the summer, but you mentioned nothing about the winter. So in the winter, would that be visible? Is the landscaping high enough?
Yeah, but the existing...
I'm on a hill too, so I'm up, and so I can see that whole property from my place.
Overexhibited here. We'll see, there's quite a bit of, here's Ms. Strauss's property, right? The retention, or the bio-retention area is going to be here. So this whole area is that bottom land of woods that a lot of us trekked through with the bike and hike committee, and trees in this area. There are evergreens. We're trying to save as many of those as possible and replant them. But we have that mix that the Riparian Corridor calls for relative to planting, and there are some deciduous trees in there, and they won't be foliated in the winter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from anyone else that wanted party status?
Mrs. Jones, can you go up to the microphone, please? And re-identify yourself.
Okay, I'm Marcel Jones, and I had a couple of questions. One, the old farmhouse, is that, are they going to do anything with it? I mean, is it just going to be a vacant building?
No, it'll be sold.
Oh.
Be renovated and sold.
Oh, okay, that was one question, and of course, my mind is going blank. I think the rest of the stuff and the pictures that I brought have to go with the next part, actually, with it, because I had pictures of what the pond looks like now, which is pretty bad. And the other question is, how long is this project going to take if, once everything gets approved?
Once we emerge from our municipal approvals, we seek township and DEP approval, so we'd hope to wrap those up in this year, 2011. So it can be queued up for a start for either late 2011 or early 2012. Our idea is to try to get in accord and end up when they do the widening for the lanes at the Parkway, so that we're not ripping up fresh improvements, so there is some urgency in getting that busy.
Okay, so, well, I guess the rest of my questions are when you get to the next section. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I think, and this question came up during the planning commission meeting, I'll probably emphasize it tonight. Somebody asked, or many people asked, well, how quickly can you get out there and start taking the buildings down and doing the other stuff? We've indicated that if we got our approvals in place, and we're hoping to do that tonight, that once the appeal periods expire, that we would be able to get started within 60 days after that, so that we could start to demolish what's out there, hopefully by June, sometime by Labor Day, if we could get approvals tonight, so we can start to make the place look better, and hopefully, that's the schedule.
And does that include cleaning up the pond when you're tearing down the buildings?
I presume that we could start doing that at the same time, yeah.
It's good to know. You had one more question, Mrs. Strauss?
I'm only asking this because of the previous lady that was here. How long, you said when you were going to get started, but how long is that going to take? Because we already hear all the construction work for the Parkway, so...
It may take 15 years, apparently.
15 years, yes. And how long are we going to do the bulldozers?
15 years, I don't... She said I had 15 years.
I know, she did say you had 15 years, but when she asked you the question, I didn't hear you really answer.
You don't have 15 years, okay?
Really?
Well, it's market-driven, isn't it? You do all the site improvements, which is most of the noise.
Yeah, and in fairness, I mean, there has been a fair amount of interest expressed, notwithstanding the current economic climate, both for the residential land and for the officeing, so.
So there's an opportunity, you might be building this in stages?
Yeah, I mean, we have the opportunity to do three separate office buildings, so obviously, you know, the way the world works today, you're not going to build more than one unless you have at least 50 or 70% of it spoken for, so.
So this could be a come-and-go situation for you guys.
If it takes that long, everybody's in trouble, I don't think so.
That's true.
Any other questions? If not, the board was inclined to approve the conditional use, it would be subject to the following conditions. Receipt of land development approval from the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors. Compliance with Boucher and James report dated May 31, 2011. Compliance with the Riparian Corridor Management Plan dated 5/17/11. Next, any new structure to be constructed pursuant to the application shall be constructed in accordance with the architectural renderings submitted as part of the conditional use proceedings. Next, the historic home and its historic character shall be preserved as a single-family dwelling in accordance with exhibit A-8, and that restoration shall be memorialized by the preparation, execution, recording of appropriate facade or other easement. The pond will be offered for dedication to the township with the understanding that it'll be maintained by the Homeowners Association. The fence will be restored between the project and the adjoining neighbors, and I think I heard that the debris from removal of trees to be cleaned up as part of the conditional use approval. Mr. Murphy, do you agree to those conditions?
In addition, I do, and there's one more that you and I discussed that I think would be important for the board and the neighbors to be comfortable with, and that is, I think you requested that a value be assigned to the renovation and restoration of the farmhouse, and the value be escrowed as part of the overall...
I was going to come to that in the land development.
Okay, to give the board some comfort that the work that's contemplated will, in fact, be done and be provided for.
We have to do land development.
I'll make a motion that we approve this with the conditions set forth by our solicitor.
Second, Strauss. Does the board have any more questions or comments?
I just had a question on the lighting of the office spaces, but I don't know if that would come up in the land development. I don't want to...
I just want to say, I think this would be a great cleanup for that area. I mean, the place looks like a mess now, and I'm sure the poor people who live around there have to put up with this, and that includes the pond too in regards to this, because I've been down there different times, and I know the property well, and it's been really deteriorated over the last few years. And even before that, probably with that White Eagle Lab and all that there. So I just want to say that I think this would be a great improvement for your neighborhoods.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? Mr. LaRue?
I just have a comment.
Grab a mic. You could queue up if you like.
I'd just like to say I'm happy with that, because I actually worked at White Eagle Labs for about 13 years as a facility manager there, and it's a mess over there, and be glad to see it gone and fixed up. I'm happy for the, I'm here in support.
So there's no nostalgia associated with those buildings?
Um, no. Well, actually, you know, I walked through a while back, just for the heck of it, and I work elsewhere now. And went into our old maintenance shop, and some of my writings and notes are still there. It was kind of weird after, I've been out of there since '03, so.
The archives.
Yeah, so it was kind of weird, but...
Caked walls.
I'm just in support of the project. It's a good thing.
Thank you.
I have one question, is that you mentioned in your reading that they would be replacing the fence, and when the tree was taken down...
Repairing the fence, I think.
Repairing the fence. Well, when the tree was taken down last week, they had said to my sister-in-law that they didn't know whose fence it was, whether it was our fence or their fence, or who was responsible for the fence, so we need clarity on that, because she's got a broken fence open to that pond area.
I think the fence, my recollection, it was installed by Cutler as part of the development of your housing project years ago.
Mm-hmm, so that was when she was told that she would be responsible for repairing the fence, if that was the case, but you'd mentioned...
Well, they've agreed to repair it now, but going forward, the burden will be on the homeowners, because it was part of their land, their subdivision.
Okay, well, that's what we needed to know, because nobody on that line, we all assumed it was their fence, because it was their pond protecting their land, so we could have taken it down a long time ago. It's looked pretty shabby for a while.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Was there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, five and O. Thank you.
We're now proceeding to land development. I don't know if the board wants to have a whole further drill, but maybe I can just outline what's proposed and the conditions, and you can decide at that point what your pleasure is.
Mr. Garten, can we excuse just a minute?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
As mentioned previously, the applicant proposes to consolidate two lots identified as Bucks County Tax Parcel, 9-7-130 and 9-7-130-34 into one lot. The applicant then proposes to demolish the office buildings, pardon me, demolish the existing office warehouse, other commercial buildings, and erecting the property three office buildings totaling 32,000 square feet and 10 single-family attached dwellings, while maintaining the existing Neiman Farmhouse for 12 11 dwellings. Plans were prepared by Gilmore Associates, Inc., were dated September 1, 2009, were last revised March 30, 2011. Conditions would be as follows. One, continued compliance with the conditions of the conditional use approval that just happened. Two, is compliance with Boucher and James report dated April 12, 2011. Next, compliance with the Township's Director of Code and Forensics Correspondence date April 15, 2011. Next, compliance with the Doylestown Township Environmental Advisory Council's memorandum dated April 18, 2011. Next, compliance with the Penone Associates report dated April 20, 2011. Next, compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission report dated 12/21/10. Next, compliance with the comments received from the Doylestown Township Park and Rec Board dated December 22, 2010. Next, compliance with the Bucks County Planning Commission report dated December 21, 2010. The applicant has also requested certain waivers from the provisions of the subdivision, land development, and stormwater ordinance. The board is inclined to grant such waivers. The applicant shall pay in fee of lieu of those improvements, the amount of which shall be determined between now and consideration by the board. Now, Mr. Murphy's going to ask for final plan approval. The board's inclined to do so, that's fine, so it would be between now and the time of the execution of the land development agreement. The waivers are as follows, I'm not going to identify the sections. One is showing all the existing water courses, and he's provided an aerial for that purpose. waiver related to the private streets, which are not being dedicated to the township. Next, requiring the 50-foot right-of-way minimum 26-foot wide for residential access streets, not being dedicated streets. Permitting a cul-de-sac to serve more than 10 units or serving 11. Requiring sidewalks on both sides, you're showing sidewalks on one side. Am I right, Mr. Murphy?
I'll defer to Greg. I think that's correct.
And sidewalk along the bulb, so that's definitely one side.
Not putting concrete curbs along the proposed existing streets, correct?
Correct.
The provisions related to showing of woodlands and tree preservation because of the size of the site. waiver from the tree protection standards for reasons I just mentioned. waiver from the minimum of 2% sheet flow grade in the basin bottoms, a minimum 1% grade for the channel flow. Next, waiver related to the collection swale be provided to drain of the basin. Next, requiring a minimum freeboard of one foot in emergency spillways. Next, requiring a perforated riser be provided each outlet, they're going to do it by a skimmer device. waiver from the minimum diameter of all storm drainage pipe to be 18 inches. waiver which requires the top of the stormwater pipe beneath the car, these six inches below grade, all pipes will have a minimum cover of two feet. waiver from the stormwater managers, which states the post-development runoff volume generated from the one-year, 25-hour design must be controlled, at least over a minimum of 24 hours. Am I going too fast? Applicant to pay in fee of lieu of recreation in accordance with applicable township requirements. Applicant to comply with the Doylestown Township Zoning Hearing Board decision dated June 6, 2011. Applicant to pay a fee in lieu of off-site to rate of 25 cents per square foot for the office space, and $1,000 per unit for all the new residential units paid at time building permits are drawn. Receipt of all permits and approvals from any agencies having jurisdiction under such matters, including Pendot, the Conservation District of Utility Providers. Subject to the execution of sanitary sewer or water service agreements for the appropriate utility providers. Township to review and approve the Homeowners Association documents, as well as the condominium documents. Applicant may, township shall require as condition of accepting dedication of any open space, the applicant, at its sole cost and expense, shall perform such environmental studies as are warranted and not been completed to date. Funding and execution of development financial security agreements. Demolition of the deteriorated buildings, not counting the farmhouse, to be completed within 90 days, Mr. Murphy?
Correct, assuming that there's no appeal, yes.
Assuming no appeal. Cleanup of the pond and restoration of the pond to commence within the same timeframe be completed within appropriate time thereafter. Value of the renovation to the farmhouse to be escrowed, with the other public improvements to be escrowed. Mr. Canals, anything else I've missed?
You did not mention my letter.
April 8.
I guess I had it, okay. Compliance with the PCS report dated, what date?
April 8.
Okay, April 8.
2011.
2011. Anything else?
Nothing.
Don't see any. Mr. Murphy, are those conditions acceptable to you?
They are.
Now, any questions from board members or from the public?
I'll just make a motion. I'll just make a motion with the conditions set forth by the...well, the motion, you can speak to the motion. The conditions set forth by our solicitor.
I had just some questions on the lighting with regard to the office complex. Now, the area there is, you know, I know that the people that live to the, where I'm facing, to the left side, which includes Mr. Leroux, you know, the building has not been functioning for a while, and you're bringing in a lot of new, more commercial versus just one commercial operator that's there. How is the lighting going to be in that area? Are you going to make sure that it's, at nighttime, it's going to be pretty much non-seaable by, I mean, you've got some other residential that you're putting in there?
Yes. I can't speak as to, you know, hours of operation of the buildings, but for the design of the lighting plan right now, we have houseside shields on any of the lights that are on the perimeter of the parking lot, and we have a very detailed lighting diagram that just shows no spillover. Really, we almost looked at the parking lot itself as its own little lot, meaning its own little parcel, and said, all right, let's keep the, you know, let's keep the lighting off of the site, knowing that we have so much more of the site. So the perimeter, and even around the south side of the office, the outside lights will be suppressed on the backside. The only ones that are sort of full fixtures are the ones on interior islands to get, you know, uniform spread all around there.
How tall are the lights there?
Is that 22 feet?
22 feet?
Yes.
And as far as what they're, because I'm just, the area there is very natural, and like I said before, just making sure that doesn't spill over into that wooded area.
Right.
So it becomes almost like a light nuisance.
Exactly.
I'm concerned about that, just for those...
And the...
That was actually something that the EAC identified as well, and...
This is office, right?
This is offices.
Right.
Sinclair, Sinclair Salisbury as well.
Not a lot of lighting at nighttime.
The parking lot area there, because with the 20-foot, 22-foot lights, you know, they could, you know, now you can see, depending on where you are, you can see Central Buck South, and you can see the football lights. You can see certain office lights in Doylestown. Just want to make sure that that is...
Sort of a modern fixture, fully cut off, focused downward, bulb recessed into housing there, sort of a low profile. It is a full photometric design, is on Sheet 11. Sinclair has reviewed that. Judy has reviewed that. I think it's got some good scrutiny. Be happy to, you know, if there's something that you see that, you know, boy, can you just, you know, extra suppress or take one of those out, be happy to look at those if you think it's a compliant plan.
I just wanted to hear for our meeting today. What's going on.
It's a small point, but could you make them look like they belong there, you know, a little consistent with the architecture?
On the...
The light fixtures themselves?
Light fixtures, yeah, yeah.
Maybe you go and all the trouble of doing a beautiful plan, you don't want to put in globes.
If we could add a condition, light fixtures, assuming they meet their objectives, are to mirror the architectures.
Right, and we can, you know, address that with a shop drawing, you know, we can use this as sort of the photometric guideline, and shop drawings can be finally approved, you know, for the actual fixture by a touch planter.
Timing, light timing, on and off hours, that sort of thing, that's a possibility, right?
I see why it could be.
Yeah.
And on the residential end, rather than a streetlight, we propose individual, just house lamps.
Right, of course.
Revised fixture to address the EAC's comments about the filter, and so it's a frosted globe, and again, we have to show a typical, but there can be any number of fixtures that work with the architecture.
And add the conditions related to lighting.
I just wanted, as a reminder, too, if you're taking trees down, which I heard a couple times relative to the fence that was fixed, that there are trees that we know are coming down. No surprises with trees is a good thing. We just want to make sure we know which ones are coming down.
Well, we have to, we have a great restrictions on that regarding how many trees they can take down. If they do take somebody, they have to replace them. If not, they're somewhere else in the township, too.
Yeah, and really, the trees that we have are the maples that line the, sort of the border between the residential side and the office side, and some of them are significant caliper, so we want to do everything we can to preserve them. A lot of them are in very poor shape, so we've lost part of one during this process already, so. Relative to the perimeter of the site, that's basically all resource protection land out there, on the borders of the, you know, there was a few trees on the property line that were damaged, been, you know, in poor shape and coming down, but the balance of the trees are really in areas that we can't touch.
And I just wanted to make sure, because it was mentioned when you were talking about the fence repair, that two trees had to come down.
Yeah.
So we like to know before any come down, because it's really hard to fix it afterwards.
One other thing, did you consider at all a neighborhood composting area?
We did, and because you brought that up during the sketch plan review, we recall that, and we, you know, so, hey, you know, how will this neighborhood really operate? I think if it was single-family detached lots that we had individuals responsible for their own properties, then that, we would take a little more closer look at that. Honestly, this will be, you know, heavily maintained by contractors, and quite honestly, they'll be probably taking that material with them, and they'll be paying part of the dues that you pay for leaves and grass clippings.
Other questions? I don't see any.
Yes, I have a question.
Identify yourself, sir.
Bill Lee, 42 Radcliffe. I have a traffic question. Now, you did say that the widening of lower state, you're going to have the left-hand turning lanes both into the housing development and into the commercial development. Will you have a widening also on the right, you know, turns into those developments? Not that you necessarily need one, because if you have one, people want to push you off the road, you know? If you don't have one, they want to push you off the road, and if you do, they want to push you off the road. There's no winning cycle there, but did you intend on a right-hand, you know, right-hand exit?
There's not a separate right-hand lane, there is a shoulder widening along both sides?
But we won't be laned, there would be no...
There will be no, right.
So traffic has to slow down in order to let the person exit the road. I don't know what's right or wrong, I just wanted to clarify it. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question around the homestead, which we heard tonight would be renovated and sold. Well, recently, in the past two or three weeks, there was another development project down in Warrington, that there was part of the contract that they would renovate the home and keep it. Well, all of a sudden, the developer went and just tore it down. So what my question, I don't know if my question is for Mr. Murphy or for the board, what measures or controls would you put in place so this doesn't happen in this development project?
Couple things. Number one, the contract existed that you referenced was between the owner of the property and the buyer. Board was not a party, township wasn't a party in Warrington. What I provided for in the conditional use was the recording of facade easement, which requires that no one can, other than for routine maintenance, can change the facade of the building to put, you know, aluminum siding up or some other thing. Obviously, if some weekend, they take a bulldozer down there and demolish it, there's not much we can do if we don't know about it, but we are providing for the facade easement. It's a condition of all the approvals that they restore the house. They're going to be escrowing money to guarantee the restoration of the house, so to the extent we can manage to maintain it and preserve it and see that it does occur, we've done that, we can't deal with the unlikely catastrophic event, however.
But their entire use is dependent on that house existing and being maintained, so if the house goes, there goes their approval, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, everything was designed around the keeping that house, the historical value of that house.
Can we also have Mr. Leroux that will probably let everybody know if there's something hot? Keep your eyes out.
It's an asset. I mean, we'd like to renovate it and sell it. We don't want to blow it up.
That's not a, that's a viable asset.
Again? Again?
Yes, because we were talking about, since we're talking about the property with the pond and the trees, and you had mentioned you were worried about the trees, in our backyard, and I've mentioned it before, we have like one, two, three, four pines, that huge ponds that are beautiful along the pond going to my sister-in-law's, and they're all covered to the top with ivy that's going to be choking them to death.
Probably wild grape. Probably not ivy.
Some kind of, something going on.
Have a big leaf, about this big?
And growing on those trees.
I don't know, but it's a massive cover, and what happens is that the trees, I think that's how the other two trees died, is it choked them to death. And so there's a big maple and some pines that are all covered with that, to the top.
Well, whose trees are they?
They're behind our property.
Behind our property, next to them.
They're on the other side of the pond.
They're on your property.
Inside.
They'll take care of them, then, I'm sure.
We mentioned it to them, and they said that they would take care of it, but if you're worried about those trees, those trees could end up dying by the end of the year. And those vines should be cut back? I mean, there's a lot of provision...
They should be cut away.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they shouldn't, they'll have to be removed.
Remove the vines from the border pine trees, Mr. Murphy, you agree to that?
Yes.
And that's part of our ordinance that we have, that we recently changed to make sure the best...
Well, it's a base of species, is what it is, and we have an ordinance about it, it's a base of species that it had to be dealt with, so.
All right. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have one question. We keep going back to the pond, and I have pictures to show what the pond actually looks like now. It looks like a cesspool right now, and mosquitoes are so bad.
They're going to get in and try and fix it as soon as possible. We have to approve the plan first.
Oh, yeah, I know that. It's just, if there's anything that can be done about the mosquitoes right now, because, you know, West Nile and all that type of stuff.
Well, it's impossible to deal with all the mosquitoes, but you have certain fish habitat that you put in the ponds to deal with it, because you have the chamois, and mosquitoes are a fact of life. We can't live without some, so they'll do their best, they have to restore the pond, and one of those restorations will be to deepen it, which will avoid some of those issues, and plus...
Put a fountain in it to, it gets pond scum all over the top.
An irrigation system, yeah.
Yeah, that does work.
And I'm sure they're trying to sell houses for a lot of money, and I'm sure they're going to look at pond scum out their windows. I suspect it'll get taken care of.
Okay.
I will make that motion again, that we approve this with the conditions set forth by our solicitor.
There's a motion, and it's a second. You don't have to do it again. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. I have a note.
Great, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Next item, the staff had the opportunity to meet with Thompson Organization that are, that have purchased the dealership that, which we know is Holbert's, and they're going to do a modest little addition to their parking facilities, and in order to guarantee that all the township's costs, the engineer, whatever, pay, they're willing to enter into a professional services agreement, and they posted the money, and I believe the staff recommended the board execute the, approve and execute the professional services contract.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Signing it now.
All I have.
Okay, 202 Parkway Cooperative Memorandum Agreement, just some changes, minor changes of what we're dealing with here, Dick.
Sorry, Dick, you put the memo, it was Dick's memo.
Rest of you can wake up now.
Yeah, this is a corporate, this is similar to the other agreements that we have regarding the 202 Parkway, and Dick has just reviewed it. We sent it to Jeff previously, and at this point, as they continue, we'd like to kind of move this along and get the board's authorization on it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. I'm going to call a question, unless there are any questions or concerns. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. About...
Is it possible to get a copy?
Sure. Do you want my copy? If you want to wait a minute.
I'll be here.
Do you want the plan or the pictures?
I'll be here if you have it.
Oh, we have a copy of what?
He's talking about the 202 agreement. Oh, the 202, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
You have all that?
Cooperative Memorandum and DEP grant.
No, that's my next one.
That's okay. I didn't mean to write on you.
I should try, though.
Yeah.
DEP mini-grant agreement resolution. This is nice.
Mm-hmm. This is some additional work that we're doing. Sandra's here, she, I'm sure she's all excited, she wants to talk about it.
Well, no, no. What it is, is a grant...
She has questions, but it's a great, it's going to be a wonderful opportunity, a program that we're running with, through our park and recreation department, too.
Didn't get the money, this is a grant application.
We got the money.
We got the money. This is...
Acceptance.
To accept the money.
Oh, okay, good.
$2,790.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Close it. Where am I? Oh, number six. Deestablishing...
No.
The resolution, close out the DSNR grant?
Aye.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's all been accounted for. Okay, good. Reestablishing the length of the term for the Bike and Hike Committee. Rick, can you speak to this real quick?
Yes. Do you remember, we talked about there was no staggering of the terms, and everyone on the bike and hike path had one-year terms. So every January, we were renewing the one-year terms for the people on the Bike and Hike Committee, so it was a consensus that a board was to stagger that. So I put together this ordinance to, a resolution to spread it out, so that three-year terms, some have two-year terms, so we wouldn't have the whole committee coming, expiring at December 31st of each year.
Do you want to put that in the form of motion?
Uh, yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that five and oh?
Yes.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, July 20, July 2011 is Park and Rec Month. We're establishing that as a...
I have a resolution.
It's a resolution from the House of Representatives, and we have a resolution for Doylestown Township.
I'd like to make a motion, if we need that, to establish July.
True.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
July is Park and Rec Month in Doylestown Township.
And I can do number eight, and the board can...
I have a comment first. I hope that...
Take the mic.
Oh, no, I'm not for the vote.
Take the mic.
I just hope that the board of supervisors takes us farther than July, as far as realizing what the Park and Rec Department does for our township, not only from here on, but from the past as well, what they've done and what they will continue to do.
I think the, I think the Park Board should give us some examples and make presentations often and frequently about what you guys are doing. I'm kidding.
You know how much I love to do that, but I will, if you all need to be reminded. I will gladly, because I'm so proud.
I think if the Park and Rec Board and Park, we loved our parks. We're very supportive. But if you guys have things that you want us to recognize and take note of, I think it's, let us know. And then bring it, you know, bring it to us, and we'll go, yay, okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think the township could award the backhoe replacement bid, the tree pruning and takedown bid, and the concrete finishing bid, in accordance with three memorandums submitted to the board by Mr. John dated May 26, 2011.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a question regarding the backhoe bid. I know we have, what, two backhoes down there now, Dick?
That's correct.
How many tractors do we have total?
I'm sorry?
How many tractors do we have down there? Different, I know, I'm making...
Probably half a dozen.
And making, I mentioned to the one we bought five years ago for $139,000, which is down there, and I was against that at the time. And the reason I'm saying this, we have eight employees for the roads, and we have almost a tractor for everybody to drive. And I know we don't, you know, I just, we're asking to spend, what, $81,000 for, to buy a tractor?
It's a backhoe.
It's a backhoe.
Well, it's a tractor with a backhoe.
No, it's very different.
Well, it's basically a tractor with a backhoe.
No.
It's your opinion. It's a backhoe. It's a different piece of...
Anyway.
One person at a time. Stephanie, tell them what it is.
Anyway.
Dick, tell them what it is.
I mean, I think they're very, I think the backhoe that Dick is proposing, correct me if I'm wrong, Dick, that they are very different from the tractors that we have down there, Tom.
Well, I'm just asking the question. I just hate to spend, in this environment, this time, where things are tough, to spend $81,000 to buy a new one. We have a John Deere, am I correct, down there now?
Yes.
With a backhoe.
A mowing machine.
Mm-hmm.
The backhoe basically is the backbone of the road department. You have eight employees. You do need the backhoe to help those eight employees do the job.
This does push snow. I understand it does remove snow from parking lots. Am I correct?
Yes, it can. And this is budgeted, Tom. We have this through our budget discussion.
Yes, I understand that. Still, it doesn't mean we have to spend it because it's budgeted. And I just, you know...
Well, we have a 1992 that has to be replaced. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Okay, one last thing. Zoning Hearing Board application from Malice. Is there a recommendation from the zoning officer?
Just a clarification that that last motion includes all of them.
All three.
So all of those bids were either yea or nay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I would recommend we leave that to the zoning hearing board.
Is it consensus of the board?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, real quick announcements. Our next meeting is June 21st. The Joint Bike and Hike Committee will hold the kids' bike derby on June 18th, the Activity Center, from 10 to 12. There, please check the program guide for details. Fishing Derby, June 19th, 2011, Raynor Shine, Peace Valley. Check-in time is 7:30. You have to register by June 10th. Sounds of Summer Concert Series. There have been two changes. You can see them online. Doylestown Township Park and Rec Department is, is a new, has a new website, doylstonrec.com. Seeing no other business before us, we are adjourned.